Thank you, Mrs. Gropey, members of the committee. In interest of time, I'll be very quick. I just wanted to give a shout out to our DPW for the great job they did last night helping us out with the two-hour delay. I was on the phone with the DPW superintendent, Mr. Jafun, several times during the afternoon at 3:30 in the morning, and he was always responsive to us and making sure that our students could get to school safe. And so I really appreciate that, and I wanted to give him a shout out in the DPW, a shout out for all the hard work they did last night. And then just another quick reminder, kindergarten registration went up online today, so if you have a student turning five by August 31st, go online and you can register for kindergarten. And that was all I had today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rab. The next item on the agenda is the student advisory representative. We have Sam LaFarge here. Hello, do you have an update you want to give us?
Yes, I've seen a lot of positive reactions towards the peace flag those put in the school. And there was also an email sent out by Ms. Miller that has us saying what countries we would like to see on our wall of flags that will be coming soon. And there's also Culture Day on Thursday, ran by fruition, which will be really cool to see what's going to happen with that.
Oh, nice. So it's the flags of the countries that of origin, right?
Yes, that represent the kids in our school.
Nice. So we'll see. Well, my girls are half Portuguese, half Italian. We'll see which ones they put in there. I better talk to them because I'm 100% Portuguese, so you know. Anyway, okay. Thank you.
I'll make sure the Italian flag makes it up there.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. See, we're going to hit it from both ends on that.
I'll double check.
Okay. And I know that they have that wall of flags in many, many high schools in Massachusetts, so I'm psyched to hear about it. I heard it looks pretty good in some of the other schools.
The Irish flag will definitely be up there, right?
That's yours, right? You put the Irish flag. Nice. That's what's cool about it, representing every student. Okay, so this is one of the most enjoyable times in a school committee meeting, other than graduation. It's when Mr. Colantonio comes with his students to acknowledge the Project 351 ambassador and the nominees. So we're extremely excited. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Colantonio.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gropey, members of the school committee, Dr. Rab, Mr. Ford, and my students. So this is one of my favorite things to do as principal. Each year, eighth-grade students are nominated for consideration as the ambassador for Project 351 in Massachusetts. There is no application process for Project 351. Teachers at OMS silently nominate eighth-grade students. There's no essay. They don't try out. There's no talent competition. They don't brag and say, "Look how great I am." Teachers silently nominate students who exhibit the Project 351 qualities of kindness, compassion, humility, generosity of spirit, and an ethic of service to others. Massachusetts has done Project 351 since 2011. I think it's an amazing organization. It's an amazing opportunity. I think they rightly choose grade eight as a time in a young person's life where they really can capture that ethic of service. And so all of the 351 towns and cities in Massachusetts, that's where the name comes from, you get one ambassador. So the town of Stoughton each year has one ambassador. Our ambassador this year is Nialia Lindsay. And we have two nominees. We recognize all of the students who are nominated to be the ambassador. Nialia was nominated by multiple teachers who all sang her praises for a student with an enormous capacity for compassion, kindness, humility. And Project 351 really tries to focus on sort of unsung heroes, unsung leaders in school communities. And I think Nialia really exhibited all of those things. Ariel Lee's Michelle Gaines was also nominated. Chloe Hannaford was also nominated. Jaylene Guerrero was nominated but is not here this evening. And Janelle Nashawati was nominated. She is not here this evening. I do have to say, I've been doing this for 10 years. This is my first all-female group. So girl power there. It was all-female, all-female Project 351 group. Just wonderful kids doing great things, making an impact on their school community. Nialia was lucky enough to attend what's called Launch Day at the State House over the Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. And that's an inspirational day to inspire service. And Nialia came back with an idea for a service project that she's going to do in the town of Stoughton with Nialia, correct me if I'm wrong, Cradles to Crayons.
Oh, nice.
Yep, Cradles to Crayons. So we're working on the details for that project. And then she's invited to participate in a year, a whole year of service opportunities if she wants to do that. But mostly just want to recognize these ladies, young ladies this evening, for making a positive impact in their school communities and exhibiting these Project 351 qualities.
Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations to you for being the representative.
Yeah. And their lucky families are here this evening to get
I know. Congratulations.
Hear me say nice things about them and get the certificate.
He waves it. He's like, "Not me." Congratulations to all your parents. You must be so proud. It's such a great thing to know that they were silently nominated, you know? And that says a lot about the work that you guys have done at home and also the work that they do in the schools by making the teachers' jobs easier and doing the right thing. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to say before we move on with the ceremony of award ceremony? I guess, anybody want to say anything?
Yeah, just congratulations and thank you for all that you're doing. And I'm excited to see what you do in the future. Congratulations to the families. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yes, I just want to say congratulations too. Excellent job. Good job, Mom and Dads.
I want to add my congratulations and just say that, you know, people like you are the ones who get a lot of stuff done. A lot of people like to be the fastest or the best, but it's the quiet ones, the unsung heroes. You're the ones who make real change. You make a real difference in people's lives, and I hope to see one of the great things you do in the future.
Yes, definitely congrats as well from me and to the parents as well. Great job. And you guys are an inspiration, role models and stuff. Keep it up.
It's not easy, not in this day and age. It's a lot of peer pressure and a lot going on, a lot of social media stuff, so we're just happy to see this is, you know, and girl power, like Mr. Colantonio said, this is great.
Girl power.
Oh, I just realized that. It's true.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't realize that.
Oh, yes.
Good case in point right there.
I know. I just realized that. Anyway, so what we're going to do now is Mr. Colantonio is going to come up. He's going to come over here. There's some certificates for you guys. He's going to call your names, and then you guys will come up. You'll walk across. We'll shake all your hands, and then you're going to get a photo with our wonderful media relations manager. And parents, I know you might want to grab a picture as well, but I also know he's going to grab one if you guys want it. We can get the picture to you if you want it. Good? Okay. All right, Mr. Colantonio, let's do it. Do you need the mic?
Do you want me to hold?
You can.
I think I do need the mic.
Okay, do you have the certificates?
No.
Stop it.
No.
Where are they?
Did they come up here?
No, I thought you guys did.
No, no. He
We usually have them.
Okay.
But we should just recognize.
Let's recognize them, shake hands, and then send the certificates after.
Mary Mydoum.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Mary used to do it.
Yeah, we don't
Okay. All right, so this is what we're going to do, girls.
We're going to get you, we're going to get them certificates at some point.
And a mug. No. Do you have mugs?
I have mugs.
Go get, go get a bag. Go get one of those bags. We're getting your certificate right now.
I'm going to, I'm going to call you guys up by name. You're going to shake the hands of the school committee members and then
He's going to
Right here for a photo, okay?
All right, and he's going to grab just something little right now.
Okay.
So that's something you might want to note that, and you guys need to know what that thing is, because I don't think they knew.
Yeah. We did get certificates at OMS. Do we do certificates?
I think you did them at OMS. You had certificates that you did, and then you bring them here, and then you used to throw them at me and say, "Put them in alphabetical order," and I was like, "I don't know what I'm doing."
I feel like I'm on The Price is Right.
Come on down.
$70.
It's kind of funny.
With the mic.
Don't drop the mic, though.
I love that show, too. I was pretty good guessing the price. Oh!
Nice.
Here we go.
That was legit. That is nice job, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. All right.
Although the good ones.
Okay. So Ariel Lee's Michelle Gaines, nominee.
There you go. Don't hurt anybody with it. It's heavy. Just realized.
This is Chloe Hannaford. Nice job. Photo op.
Mom, you can come over here if you want to take a picture. Stand over here, you can.
You can do it if you want.
Yeah. Yep.
And this is our ambassador, Nialia Lindsay.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right.
Then we're going to have you
Project 351 nominee and ambassador. I do want to say the two names of the girls
Okay, go ahead.
Who couldn't be here tonight, Jaylene Guerrero and Janelle Nashawati.
Awesome. Congratulations to both of them. What we'll do is we'll have you three bring your chairs, flip them around here, and the school committee is going to get together with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, and we're going to take a picture with you, with Mr. Colantonio behind you guys. Cool? All right, come on over.
Be like, "Tell them what they've won, young'un."
Won a water bottle.
Was it Bob Barker? It was Bob Barker, right? Yeah.
Stay under your butt.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Lindsay.
You all right, Lindsay?
I just ran over behind.
Get in here.
I'm
This works.
Can I not have this mic?
Yeah, come on, do it just for one picture.
All right, everybody ready?
Yep. Congratulations.
And a couple more for you.
Oh, my face hurts.
Awesome.
All right. Phew. Congratulations. Great job. All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Great job. Push your butt.
That's okay. You can leave them there. That's okay. Thank you, honey. Have a great night, the parents. Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations.
Do you guys just want to, if you want to stay for like two minutes, we're just going to do one last thing. If you guys want to sit and just, I don't know if any of the kids have left yet, but might be good.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Oh, we got the principals here. It's a pack tonight. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Health, and Operations appointment. This is a position, a newer one, where we talked about the reorganization. We had some positions that we shifted around, and this is one that we're bringing in to bring more of a better span of control in the district leadership. I think, Mr. Ford, you had mentioned as well, too, that a district this size usually have a few assistant superintendents to manage the different pieces within the district, and we were one of the lighter ones. And what was the percentage you gave of leadership?
Oh, we talked about the relative amount of money that's spent in a district for administration. And in our district, we spend about 60% of what an average school district does. And we talked about it. It means that a lot of administrators have multiple functions, and everything gets done, but we don't always have the capacity to focus on specific things. And with the position we're talking about, it's a position to actually help our principals to a large part in terms of hiring in all the different capacities that they have to deal with. So this particular position is going to be incredibly useful for the district and pay dividends long term.
Now, what we're going to do is we're going to look for Dr. Rab to now make his recommendation for the new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Health, and Operations. So I'll hand it to you, and then the school committee is going to ask a couple questions or openly discuss, and then we make the appointment. Okay? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. We advertised the position of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Health, and Operations on January 31st. And just a couple of days later, I was pleased to receive an application from Mr. Matt Colantonio expressing interest in the position. Mr. Ford and I interviewed him, and it became very clear very quickly that he was an excellent candidate for the position and well-positioned to take it over. With over 20 years of experience in Stoughton, 15 of which as an administrator at both the middle school and Stoughton High School, Mr. Colantonio has demonstrated skills in educational leadership, staff recruitment, retention, and development, team building, and communication. As the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Health, and Operations, he will manage all aspects of hiring and recruitment, as well as oversee our health department, operations, and food service. I'm very pleased to recommend him to the school committee to be appointed as our Assistant Superintendent.
Wow. Okay, you might want to push the button on your microphone, Mr. Colantonio. What a pleasant recommendation. So is there anything that you would like to say before we maybe make statements or ask any questions?
Sure, yeah. I'd just like to say that I, you know, started my career in education 22 years ago at the Old Stoughton High School, in the oldest building of the Old Stoughton High School. I was in A Building. I was an English teacher, so. A306, I had the wooden buckled floors, and I've been in Stoughton for my entire career. I love the district, always have. It's been my great fortune to be in the right place at the right time over the years. I was a teacher in what I think was a very strong department at Stoughton High School, got to coach the wrestling team there, was a Golden Knight Award chairperson, which is pretty cool. I was on the school newspaper. Jeff Pickett might have been running that for me, if I'm being honest, but when he was in like 11th grade, but no. And I became an administrator in 2007, was an assistant principal for a few years, high school principal, and then middle school principal. And it's just been my good fortune to be able to be an administrator. I can't believe I'm saying this, but I've been a building administrator in Stoughton for 15 years. So a few years ago, I got certified to be an assistant superintendent or superintendent at all levels, started to kind of think about the impact that I might be able to make in that capacity. Going to be tough for me to leave the world of students without a doubt. That's going to be the hardest part for me. I've always been surrounded by students. But I think that I've acquired some skills over the last 22 years, particularly this position is sort of perfect, right time for me to make the move, and the right skillset. So I think that my strength has always been my ability to work with people, recruit, attract, retain talented teachers and staff. So it was kind of something that I couldn't really pass up, and if the district will have me, I'm looking forward to making an impact, a positive impact in this position.
So I will start down this end, if that's okay, if you have any questions or anything you'd like to comment on.
Yeah, Mr. Colantonio, I'm so excited that you submitted an application, and thank you for speaking to your background a little bit. You mentioned that you are thinking about how to have an impact. Do you mind like saying a little bit about what your vision is and like the impact that you're hoping to have in the new world?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so I think at OMS, I think that, I don't want to say I've, we've, Ms. Anderson, we've at OMS done a pretty amazing job making what I think is the best middle school in the world, if I know I'm biased, but that's what I would say. I think that the reason behind that success is our ability to attract, retain, recruit talented teachers. I go to career fairs. I'm the district representative for MPDE, so I just, I have a joy for like marketing the district and trying to, in a healthy way, compete for candidates and steal them from other districts. Like, I sort of like to do that. I'm a pretty competitive person. So I think it's that skillset that I'm looking to grow and maybe hope that it pays off from a more district level. And I'm also looking forward to, I think I'm the most senior principal in Stoughton right now, and I'm really looking forward to like working with the principals a little more directly and in that capacity.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Colantonio, I am excited for you, but I know that that's going to be a big loss at the middle school. But as you said, you are very enthusiastic, and I'm sure that you will be able to go out and, I don't even know how to say that, recruit people for student public schools. So I support that, but
That'll be tough.
It's going to be tough.
Yeah, it will not be easy for me. I love OMS, and I love what we've done there.
I know, I feel like you are
Yeah.
Person for it, but
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be tough. But I think, you know, 15 years as a building administrator, I think that, I think it's a good time, if there's ever going to be a good time. It's a good time to kind of see, you know, what kind of else that I can do. But yeah, that'll be, it'll be a tough spring for me. It'll be, it'll be tough to leave OMS. And I'm sure that you might, I mean, I'll be visiting in this capacity, I'll be visiting all the principals at all the schools. You might find that I'm at OMS more than the other ones, maybe. I'll try not to be, but
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all you did for the Stoughton Public Schools.
Just trying to find something I had heard, and I wanted to confirm that I could say it publicly, because I didn't know if folks were aware that you were nominated for the Life Changer of the Year Award, National Life Changer of the Year Award recently. He knows that, right? I sent you the note. I want to say it, I want to break it down for everybody here. I wanted to make sure.
Surprised.
So that's a huge achievement, because you had, you were Middle School Principal of the Year.
Yeah, 2018.
Remember we had the big, your heads on a stick?
I do, yeah.
It was huge.
Yeah, 2018.
Yeah, that was fun. Yeah, that was 2018. It was enjoyable.
Yes.
You were surprised coming out of the building with that one.
I was.
Yeah, but
Massachusetts Middle School Principal of the Year. But that was 2018. So when I, when I say that at home, my wife says, "You were Massachusetts Middle School Principal of four years ago." But anyway.
Now you can say
She's watching, honey.
National Life Changer. Now you can say, "Hold on." So you're
I did hear about that. That's very nice. It's very flattering.
So congrats to you on that as well. I think that says a lot about what you've been doing in that building and who you are. And in 2018, the achievement that you made and what your peers and what people think of you. So that's great. So this position is for Human Resources, Health, and Operations, and that's a lot. So operations is the food services, it's maintenance and like bussings under that. It's a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
Where recently it was all kind of spread out, and all those people were reporting to Dr. Rab, there was like 20-something people reporting. Our structure wasn't, you know, the best. So it's a lot. Can you, like, so some of those things you don't have experience in, so this will be learning for you as well, which is a great thing. Have you thought about any ways that, you know, in coming into this, that you're going to be able to make an impact or any things that you think are going to be like a roadblock for you that you're going to have to learn?
Yeah, I think that it's a new position, so I don't, you know, there's certainly going to be things that I'm learning in year one. Being a building principal at any level, definitely the secondary level, and I would say definitely when you're the only middle school in town, which we're the only middle school in town, some other towns have multiple middle schools, you do get a little bit of everything with experience. So I have the maintenance crew and the operations at OMS, certainly connected to the supervision of those folks. And I think for me, learning what the directors of those departments need for support is kind of priority number one, and how I can best support them is priority number one. I certainly don't want to pretend that I know what those folks should be doing until I learn exactly what they need and what they're doing. But I think I have a pretty good ability to learn what folks need and be supportive, think outside of the box, and help in that way. So, yeah, and obviously the human resources component is kind of like, ooh, that's my little sweet spot. I love human resources. And if you said, "Hey, what do you feel about maintenance?" I'm probably not like, "Ooh, I love it." But I do love supporting people. And so if the maintenance folks feel like my work makes their lives easier and the job's better and the school's better as a result, well, then I'm into that. And so I'm looking forward to that. But there'll definitely be some learning on the job. But luckily, the other assistant superintendent, Mr. Ford's been around for a really long time, so
Yes, he has.
Yes.
So you'll be joining, you'll be starting a good team. Now, that's great. And also, you'll be the civil rights representative for the district and the EDI representative as we meet some changes to the budget to make some adjustments there. So it's nice to know that you'll be at the helm of that as well, because I know those are a lot of near and dear things to do.
Yeah, and again, I've been the OMS civil rights rep since I've been principal, so yeah.
Which is required by law.
Yeah.
Just want to throw it out there.
Yeah.
We're not creating these things out of nowhere.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, no, this is like big things that are required, and there's laws that have to be followed and things that have to occur. So we know that you have that ability, so it's great.
You stole my question.
Oh, I did? Which one?
The one about, you know, how are you going to bring, you know, your experience to the new things that you have to learn? But I think you answered that question. So just want to thank you for the work that you've done so far, and excited about your candidacy for this position.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Hi, Mr. C.
Hey. How are you?
Good. I just want to say congratulations on this new opportunity. I think you're well-fitted for the position, and I've had the pleasure of working with you and getting to know you, and I think that you're a great candidate in terms of your extrovertness and dealing with individuals, your HRC capabilities, dealing with me, the fact that we've worked together, and then also how the kids react to you in the school, and my children as well. So I really appreciate that you applied for this position, and I wish nothing but great things for you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great, with nothing, no other discussion?
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, you do it. I was going to do it.
No, I'm going to do it.
You do it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion effective July 1st to appoint Mr. Colantonio as Assistant
as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Health and Operations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Mr. Collantonio.
Do you have a certificate?
Oh, wait, do we have a certificate for you?
No, I got a water bottle.
Let's go, here, come shake our hand.
I got a water bottle. I better get a water bottle.
Well, now you're an Assistant Superintendent. Maybe you'll get like a shirt with like a...
Yes.
Alright. Thank you guys so much. I'm glad you guys were able to stay, because that was a big announcement. So thank you, and congratulations to you guys as well again. Have a great night.
Thanks.
You wanna leave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Does he wanna stay for the field trip?
Do you wanna stay for the field trip thing? And then we're gonna move the South, we have a South School Building Project presentation that we're gonna move up, and that'll be next. So if you guys wanna just take a seat, it'll be next. Who? Us? Yeah, wanna take a picture with us? And then we're probably gonna wanna get a picture of him with a flag, and then Sam will have you move. Then you'll go, you'll go behind and take a picture, and then he can post it on social media, announcing you. But yeah, come on over.
Can we do a video that he pops up?
No, you can get in the front. Yeah, in the front. You stand next to me. It's a safe space. Yeah.
I do feel tall next to you, so I...
Yeah, 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 that's why I'm saying, stand right here.
Don't put this sticker behind you.
Listen, don't talk too much, really. Yeah, you wanna get over there? Stop, you're so fresh. Okay.
Oh, he is the middle school.
So, the next thing-
Field trip.
-is trying to keep track of all of the paperwork. So just, one second, everyone.
That's crazy.
Alright, so...
This one's on there. Sorry, if I'm taking all the...
The next thing on the agenda, we're gonna get to the, we have, I'm just gonna call them out while there's pictures being taken. The eighth grade band and chorus, Canterbury Lake Park field trip, and then the Stoughton High School Student Council, MASC Conference Overnight Trip, the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. So we're gonna ask, so Mr. Collantonio will take a seat. If you want to speak to it, you can, on the,
Sure.
Eighth grade band and chorus, Canterbury Lake Park field trip.
Sure.
You wanna?
Yeah. So, uh, the memo, I hope everyone has the memo. So I don't wanna just-
You have that.
Yeah, I don't wanna regurgitate it all, but, so the Canterbury Lake Park's a wonderful trip for eighth grade band and chorus, um, students. Um, they, in the morning, they report to, uh, the band and chorus rooms, and there's a, um, a little music festival that they do with judges, and they perform, and then they hop on some buses, uh, and they head to Canterbury Lake Park a little bit later in the morning. Um, it is a, um, team bonding kinda field trip. They all go to Canterbury Lake Park, um, and have fun after the competition. Um, they arrive back at OMS around 5:00 PM, June 12th. Is the date of the...
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Um, and they, pre-COVID, they did it for a while. It kinda died with COVID, and then it came back, um, last year, but it's just a great tradition. Uh, band and chorus students, uh, work very hard. Um, they put in a lot of hours, um, outside of school, and so this is sort of the big eighth grade payoff for them, so...
Cool.
I would humbly recommend that you, um, okay the trip, even though it's in-
June.
New Hampshire, technically.
It's in New Hampshire, so the, for folks to understand, we have to approve any field trips out of state or overnight. So that's why it's in New Hampshire. So, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the eighth grade band and chorus, uh, trip to Canterbury Lake Park on Thursday, June 12th.
Second. I knew it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collantonio. The next item we have is the Stoughton High School Student Council request to send sixteen students. Sam, would you like to speak to this, as you're the president of student council? I just realized.
Yeah, I can. Um, the trip is in Hyannis. It'll be at the Hyannis Resort and Conference Center. It's, hasn't happened since my freshman year, and I was lucky to get to go that year. And it was like a life-changing experience for me. It like, kinda put me more into student council, and brought me to where I am today. And we're a gold council. We earned that my freshman year. And so we are lucky to get to bring sixteen kids on this overnight trip. It's three days, and it's an amazing experience. We get to go to multiple officer shops and workshops to work on our leadership skills. And we have a fun formal event on the last night while we're there. And we have a bunch of, like, speakers and stuff, so we get to learn a lot of new skills. It's really amazing.
That's so nice.
I'll make a motion to approve the Stoughton High School Student Council MASC Conference Overnight Trip.
Second. Alright, we have a second. All in favor? Start down here.
Aye.
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 Aye. Wonderful. Thank you, Sam. You're gonna have fun at that?
Oh, we're done.
Alright. Um, the next item is the Stoughton High School Scholarship Transfers. We have a memo, request for scholarship rollover from Ms. Miller. Dr. Rab, do you wanna walk us through that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Gropey. Currently, there are four scholarships that are no longer being offered, and it's in the purview of the school committee to decide how those funds are distributed. The scholarships, they're no longer offered, but there are small amounts of money in each fund. Ms. Miller's requesting that the four funds be consolidated and the scholarships rolled into the principal's scholarship account, which would allow her to use the funding at her discretion for scholarships for seniors. The four scholarships are Scott Andrews, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-seven cents, Adele Karen, two dollars and twenty-nine cents, Day Memorial, twenty-two dollars and thirty cents, and Louise Picard, sixty-six dollars and six cents, for a total of two hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Additionally, a Gary Stone Scholarship containing thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents in interest, and the Luciere Memorial Scholarship containing fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents in interest, um, will now be awarded by the donor. Both scholarship administrators have authorized Stoughton High School to roll over their interest into the scholarship fund for a total of fifty-two eighty-five. Ms. Miller is requesting that this total also be rolled over into the principal's scholarship fund, and is asking for the school committee's vote to move both of those totals into the principal's scholarship fund.
So we can do the motion for a total, correct?
Yes.
So I'm just gonna total it and share it with someone. So it's two hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents, and fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, correct?
Yes.
That equals three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. So if we wanna make a motion to roll over the three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents into the principal's scholarship.
So, Maed?
That's what it's called, the Principal Scholarship Fund, correct?
Principal Scholarship Account.
Account. So, Maed?
Mm-hmm.
How you doing?
Good, how you doing?
I'm alright. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for that, Katie. That's done. Thank you, Dr. Rab. Okay. And then, the waiver of fees for the Finance Committee Budget Hearings. So, um, we have you guys next. Promise it's next. We're just gonna waive these, and then we're done. Everything else is super long. Um, so, yeah, super long. So we're just gonna, Finance Committee is having their, um, holding their meetings. There was the water, um, pipe burst at the town hall, and there's work being done there. And in addition to that, um, I know that we had one with the high schools. There was a lot going on. It was freezing weather. So given that, at the time, um, I had sent a text to, I remember the vice chair of the select board asked if he had wanted to have any meetings there, 'cause we're set up for live feed at SMAC. Um, but, um, they're having them at the library. I hadn't heard back, but I did reach out to FinCom as well, and I asked if they would like to use this, 'cause it's available for live feed, um, at SMAC. And, um, the chair asked if, absolutely. He said absolutely. So we moved some stuff around that, um, were booked here, um, and we gave them, we were able to do the permit request for all the dates that they needed. Um, so what we're doing here is we'd like to do a vote to waive the fee of, um, we need to have a, a maintenance person here, because the building's not open. Someone from maintenance needs to be here at all times to make sure the door is open, um, cleaning up and all that. So the school committee, out of our budget, we're going to be paying for that. So that would be the motion we're gonna make to waive that fee. So, just wanna ask, anybody have any questions about that? No? Wanna make a motion, don't you, Catherine? Can see it.
I would like to make a motion to waive the fees for the Finance Committee Budget Hearings.
Second.
Alright, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that is all set, and we just let them know that that's all set. Um, and I think the first meeting is Wednesday, here, and we're presenting.
Tomorrow.
I keep looking over there, 'cause David Laurie's from the Finance Committee is over in the corner, so... With bells on? Okay, so, um, do you mind, um, we have, um, so presenters, it's way down in the, under old business. This, we, we have this as a standing agenda topping on here, so we leave it there. South School Building Project, and we have Dom Tiberdi here. We have quite a few folks in-
So can I suspend, make a motion to suspend the rules and move, um, South School Building Project to next on the agenda?
Yes, you can, and I'll second that.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, welcome.
Aye, good evening.
Thank you.
I'm just, we're putting this up, I'm just giving you a copy for your-
Okay, thank you.
-record, something you can look at. We know we're pressed for time, and we know you have a long night ahead, and it's good to see some of you. I haven't seen in a while.
Hello, how are you? How've you been? Good?
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl's getting everything. Carl Franceschi is here from GRA. Carl was with us at the Stoughton High School Project. We know time is, is, uh...
So can I just ask super quick, because there's a lot of you here for it, do you guys all need to sit over here, and we can make some room? Is that good? Your Teams is up, just so you know, on the screen. You might wanna close. Alright. Um, so what we're probably gonna do, do you want this packet, um, Ms. Anderson? Can give you... You sure? Okay. Ah, I see what you're doing. Um, so, um, we can probably move some of these chairs over there, and then that way, folks, we can just shift a little down, if that's okay, please. Just be careful of the cord.
No, you're fine.
No, you're fine. You don't have to move. You're actually in the right place. It's like in the corner. There's a lot going on here.
We put Dave in the corner.
No, we wouldn't do that to you. Okay. We can get you a chair just next to him, that's fine. Don't worry about it. Just don't, be careful of the cord, please.
We don't want any tripping.
Okay. So I'll just hand it over to you guys.
Well, thank you again for having us, and it's been our pleasure, Carl and myself, to come back to work in Stoughton. Um, in deference to the time, we wanted to give you a quick update where we are. A lot of work has been going on, especially with the principals here, Katie and Jake. Um, so we wanted to give you an update here of what we've been doing. Uh, the agenda's right there, preliminary design, uh, update, the expectations of the school committee, which I'm going to tell you that I need your support as the school committee as we come through the next process. After we approve the, uh, the preliminary design and the education plan, there are a lot of milestones before the June submission that goes in in July to the MSBA. Some of you are aware of that, some of you are not. So we'll be keeping you abreast of things as we go along, making sure that material's there for you. Um, we also will talk about the education plan. That'll be Katie and Jake bringing that up. Uh, and that, the visioning, uh, plan, uh, I'm not gonna take their thunder away, because they have things to say. And Carl will talk about some of the preliminary concepts that we have taken from those visioning, that came from teachers, parents, and administrators, and, uh, a quick discussion of the redistricting. So... Making this quick, a lot of you have seen this. This is the timeline that we have. We're coming up to the submission of the PDP, which is a Preliminary Design Program. You'll be seeing the, the Formal Education Plan, and, and also the Space Summary, and the, um, some of the, the bubble-
Existing conditions.
Existing, thank you, the existing conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that'll be coming to you at your next, uh, meeting. I believe that's Mar- March fourteenth. The next slide is, is the one that I wanna key on, and then I'll, I'll leave you alone, and we'll get the rest of everyone up. And, but as you can see, we kind of give you some milestones in here of talking about what's coming up, and we will, we have working group sessions every other week. So we will bring up these work, at the working group session, something like, here we are, the evaluation criteria. We'll be talking about preliminary costs coming up, operational impact. We'll be working with Joyce Housany on that. We'll be looking at the options. We have five options. We have add, reno, we have the two sizes of the schools we'll be looking at. We're looking also at site locations. So we'll be getting to that certain point where we'll be making that evaluation at the end of May, and then hopefully we'll vote for what is the preferable one for June going forward. So that submission will be at the end of June. So there's quite a bit of work to do in the next three months, so...
So can I just, one quick question, if you go back to that slide?
Yes.
I think you need to fix where it says Plans for Wilkins Redistricting, 'cause it's the town redistricting. It's not Wilkins, right?
We can, we can, we'll adjust that.
I just wanna make sure that the messaging is clear to the town.
I, I think that's technically meant to be two different things. The, if, if there is redistricting, the state also wants to know what the plan is for the Wilkins building.
Okay.
So that's what that means.
It's just confusing for someone that doesn't sit in the working group, so I think we just wanna be clear for the public, so they're not confused.
Okay.
I don't know.
So, as, as Dom mentioned, the next submittal to the School Building Authority is the Preliminary Design Program. That's what PDP stands for. And essentially, there are those three parts to it. Um, we'll share the, the sort of, um, the bulk of it with you next, next meeting. But our team has done a pretty extensive existing conditions assessment of the existing South School. Um, and then we've been involved in, uh, visioning, and, uh, Katie and Jake have worked hard on the educational plan in particular. We'll share that with you tonight. And then we're starting to develop some preliminary options, uh, design options, um, for the project. And some of the tasks that you can see that have been happening in the last month, you've probably heard of some of these. There have been not only the regularly scheduled working groups and, and school building committee meetings, but there've been community forums held both at South and at Wilkins, and online, uh, virtually. And as we said, we, our team has been on site, too, looking at, at the, the building. And just quickly, we started with a very broad net of, of possible options. This is part of the process the state asked us to go through, but we quickly narrowed it down to really three viable sites, um, for this project to, to occur. Um, the existing site that the South School sits on i- is one. That's the seven acres. The land right behind it, um, where the athletic field, uh, is currently, that's fifteen acres. And then nearby is a town-owned piece of property that's actually three parcels assembled back in the sixties. The town had the foresight back then to acquire some land for possible school, um, use. That's the twenty-eight acres. We refer to it as the Fano Drive, because there's a paper street named Fano Drive, and it, it actually has frontage on Park Street. So it's, uh, this, that aerial photograph shows you the proximity to the existing South School. So one of the first activities that we, we, um, led and facilitated was this idea of visioning, of thinking, before we design anything, we want to make sure the district has, has a good idea of how they want teaching and learning to happen here in town. And a lot of very valuable, um, information's coming out of that that will help guide us as we get into design. But that's really the, the real, um, important, uh, aspect tonight is for you to hear, um, Katie and Jake's idea of what the education plan should be. And again, this is done irrespective of whether it's an addition, or renovation, or a new school, and whether it's, uh, for two hundred and twenty-five students, or whether it's for five hundred and fifteen students. So... Wanna, microphone?
Sure. So Jake and I have worked on a fairly comprehensive document. It's about seventy-five pages. It's called the Education Plan, and that details out the current facilities at both the South School and the Wilkins School, and how they currently are able to accommodate the different service providers, and then facilitate education within those buildings. And then from there, the exciting part of the plan is the visioning portion, and that information came from several different committee meetings in which staff members provided feedback, families provided feedback, and community members did. And we took all of those different ideas as to what they thought a vision for education in Stoughton would be, and we created this document that detailed out that vision. And the, the neat thing about this document, and it really, it really is applicable for regardless of what plan the town ends up going with, whether it's a consolidation or a larger school, whether it's a rebuilding of just the South School, or whether it's just a renovation plan.
Alright. Um, so we, we've boiled this down to just a couple of major points, um, that we find are like the most important elements of the, the, the visioning, and, and kind of what the idealized version of this building would look like. So we start with an upper and lower school with what we call the grade-level neighborhoods, so like clusters of those grade levels together, where all of the, the resources are there in one spot. Use of outdoor spaces and utilization of the building as a teacher. So we got a lot of feedback around embracing the, the woodsy-ness and the outdoor, and having the ability to do education and recess and all kinds of activities, both in and outside of the building. Uh, focusing on building community areas that are secured separately from classroom areas. So this idea of the building being accessible to the entire community at different times, um, and having the, you know, gym and cafe, like cafeteria located in different locations, so they are able to kind of shut down the, the clusters and the areas where students would be learning, or that those places would be cut down on weekends if it was used, or nights, um, to have that community of, um, space. An abundance of authentic collaboration and meeting spaces. One of the things about both the South and the Wilkins right now is there's not those meeting spaces. There's not opportunities to have people in from the outside, have small groups, have working places for, for staff and, um, for families. And then finally, um, focusing on centralized learning commons with STEM spaces above. So really focusing on what that twenty-first century students need, having those opportunities to have a STEM lab, having spaces to do that kind of learning, having that learning common space where kids can come together and work with each other, different teachers, and, and have a really authentic learning experience.
So then, um, being architects, we can't resist drawing, trying to turn those concepts into pictures. And, and so this is sort of the start of it, and it's not meant to be a, a floor plan by any means, but the, these are sort of referred to as bubble diagrams, but they try to capture some of those concepts and, and spaces that, that Jake and Katie just described, and, and start thinking about adjacencies. Uh, what wants to be near each other, and how is the building, um, organized conceptually? And again, these are just two-dimensional. We're gonna be dealing with a three-dimensional building. It may have more than one floor, and, and things will stack a little differently than the diagram, but these, these will serve us as guides going, uh, forward here. Um, and, and then we look at, at those neighborhoods that they described, too, what, 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 um, components of the program should be in each neighborhood. It's not just classrooms, but, you know, how are teachers', uh, spaces distributed? How are, uh, the special ed spaces distributed, different sizes, different configurations? Where are those meeting, uh, breakout spaces located, and how are they in relation to the classrooms? These are the kind of diagrams that will be, um, part of the education plan, and will help us going forward. And then the other thing that we need to do is sort of to, to take what they've written, um, which is a narrative and sort of a qualitative description of what the new school should be, and we have to sort of quantify that. So this is a, a form that the state uses, that asks us to use, um, to list every space in the building, what size is it, how many of them are there, and so that we can tally it up at the bottom. We understand how big the overall project would be, and the state uses it as well. If you can see on the right-hand column, way over there, it says MSBA guidelines. But it's also a way for the state to sort of keep a, keep tabs on the project as to what's eligible for reimbursement. Even though you'd like to build something maybe, uh, larger, the state may say, "Well, that's a little beyond our, you know, um, our guidelines. You can do that, but we're not gonna make it eligible for reimbursement." That does happen in most every project, one way or another. That does happen in most every project, one way or another, but it's kind of the state's way of keeping a limit on their budget as to what they contribute. Obviously, they do reimburse these projects a great deal. And we, we are doing this form for both, as we said, the 225 student enrollment, which is essentially a replacement of the existing South School, and then there's also a version for 515 students if the district should undertake consolidation and go from five elementary schools to four. And the enrollment projected would be 515. And again, those are design enrollments, it's not meant to be the capacity of the school, the capacities are certainly above that. Even while maintaining small class sizes, you can still get more students in, in the building. And so you've probably heard, there are a lot of variables here that we're juggling, you know, which enrollment is it, which site is it, which building configuration should it be? So we sort of think of this as, as a series of decisions that need to be made going forward. As Dom said, many of them are being made this spring and ultimately we get to a preferred option by June and we'll be back in front of you a few times before that, no doubt. And just to touch on redistricting, I know we always, you know, understand it's a, it's a controversial subject for a lot of school districts and it, no decision's been made on it, but the state has asked us to consider consolidating and not just replacing the South School. And a while ago, in the, in the facilities planning and master planning that the district has done, clearly the high school was identified as a needy project, so that was undertaken first, the South School was the next, and that's why it's risen to the top. And the Wilkins School was again seen as the most needy in terms of facility. And so that's why if consolidation is considered, well, it would be the one to get consolidated. But as you can see from the geography, it's not simply a case of, of consolidating the Wilkins District with the South District because it doesn't really make sense geographically. And so we show a very premature diagram on the right there of what four schools might look like in town. And so the, the district lines would be redrawn and we have an expert with, working with us this spring and can continue to help analyze the data, understand what the capacities of the, of the districts are and help develop some options as to where to draw those district lines. Again, if that's the, the choice. And that's ultimately your choice as, as a school committee. So that's where we're at. Thank you for your time. But certainly welcome questions and all. Those are all the folks, I think that's only one page of the folks that took part in some of the community meetings and visioning sessions we had.
That was a lot of information.
We've been busy.
Yeah, you guys have been very busy. Holy cow. Yeah. All right. So, I don't know, does anybody have any questions for them? So there's questions regarding like the education plan and then there's questions around like the design and the things that were brought forward to us, is there anything you guys want to ask now or something that they can consider when they go back to the, the building committee they can talk about? Just want to make sure.
I understand we'll be seeing you probably March fourteenth, so if there's something that pops up, you know, please let Dr. Rab know and we'll get it. Now I know Catherine is part of the school building committee.
Representative, yeah.
Get it up to us and we'll, we'll address it.
So the educational plan, you guys, it's a lot of work, right? Yeah. So did Ms. Miller at all help or give ideas of how she did hers? I know the state still touts that it's like the best education plan they've ever seen. Do they still do that?
We had hers to refer to, definitely.
Yeah, she advised us throughout the process.
Did she?
Yeah.
It's long. Yes, but it's so long and detailed. I was trying to read it and I don't, you got through it, the high school one?
I had yours too.
Yeah, you had yours too.
I think ours is longer.
Is it really? Well, I can imagine, right? Yeah. And that's great.
I have a quick question. I mean, you guys did a really comprehensive plan here, including the educational plan, not that you need to share, what are 75 pages?
Yeah.
With us?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering for the, I didn't see the financial budget in here, is that something you ought to take into consideration with regards to what approach you, you take?
Well, Carl can see too, we really can't make, we can't really do anything until we get the preferred option. You know, we'd be going in five different directions with the budget right now. So we really, in the high school, the same thing happened where, until we get to the preferred and that, we'll, we'll have some estimates coming through as far as the options.
Correct.
But they'll be basically square foot estimates.
Right, we refer to them as order of magnitude cost, based on, you know, rates in the marketplace for comparable, using that space summary, we'll know how big the, the projects are in terms of square feet.
Yep.
And so as Dom says, we can have a cost per square foot for construction cost and there's other costs, furniture equipment and fees to add on to that to get the total project.
And then you have to remember, there's a multiplier because we're not going to put a shovel in the ground. We have, once we have the preferred solution, then we have about a, a year to design, put together construction documents to go out to bid.
Okay.
And then most, most schools take about 28 months depending.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, so we're looking at September of 2027, so.
We need to take escalation into effect too.
So we have to look at that.
Okay.
And the last couple of years have been a wild ride. I mean, I, I've been doing economic surveys for my firm for the last three years and overall in the last three years, construction costs have gone up 30%. So it's, it's leveling off, so we'll have a better idea.
2027, holy cow. When this, the SOA we were, we were submitting was for 10th, the 10th year it got accepted. So we've been trying to get this South School done. When it's all said and done, it will be like, what, how many years after it's approved? Like? Six, seven? Nine years. Long time, maybe longer.
That's about, you think about, that's what the high school was.
Yeah.
When you think about when it's, actually the high school was a little longer.
Yeah. It's a long time, that's why it's important to keep moving with these things because it doesn't happen overnight, just because you say we're going to do it. Takes a while to get built and with all this work that was required through the MSBA. Did you have a question, Lindsay?
Yeah. To, first of all, I'd love to like read through the education plan, is that possible? Just to like get a sense of the work that you put together or is it?
I can answer the question. The committee actually has to vote on it.
Okay.
So you'll, you'll have it.
Perfect, so yeah, that'll be coming.
Probably in a week or a week and a half.
Okay, awesome.
Good question.
I will definitely read through it then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm excited to like see all the hard work you put into it.
Katie said you need a year, so.
And the other question I had was just about family engagement, community engagement. I was hoping you all could just speak to some of the work that you've done to, I know Katie and Jake, you mentioned that you'd involved family feedback and community feedback in the vision, but also just like would love to hear a little bit about what the plans are to continue to engage families in the community in the process as we go on.
Sure, I can talk real quickly and I think obviously Jake and Kate have been very helpful and Carl and myself, we had some experience previously. So we've done, we've done four community forums, two virtual, two in person, at the Wilkins and at the South, two and two. We, we basically got the, the idea out there and of the project itself. Right now, we are kind of getting, stepping back a little bit because I think it'll be much more educational for us to get the preliminary design program completed and then we are talking about getting a, a community forum at the high school. And there was a great suggestion by Mr. Door in the high school. I think a lot of parents, especially elementary school parents, have a hard time getting to the community forum with their children. So we were talking about the idea of having, you know, some of the students help with babysitting and then we could get more people into the high school. It also shows what can be done, you know, what, what, what that old high school was and what became, you know, with the new high school, so. And then we'll start also going to the other elementary schools and, because it's going to take the entire town of Stoughton to be, to buy into this. So we will go to Hanson probably afterwards and continue the program. And if you recall, if you were involved with the high school program, every time we did a community forum, it was, it was another iteration of what, what the work that we have done as a committee brings forth. So there's a lot of transparency, I know there, we try hard to make sure. I know that you probably have seen frequently asked questions, they're out there. I'm not sure if, we also translated to Portuguese, I don't know if it got out there yet, Dr. Rab.
I'll check.
But we did go out and get, get that done. If you recall too, when we got, did the high school program, once we got a little bit more meat on the bones, we all started going to the local schools, not just local schools, I meant to say, the local clubs in the area, churches. I, I remember going to the temple here. I remember, I think it's called the Daughters of the Italian-Americans or something like that, I remember wonderful ladies who wanted to feed me, so.
Ah, that's nice.
So we went out, I, I think we did close to 50 to 60 outreaches for the high school program. We will do that as we gear up with the information we have.
This is probably a good slide to use too, to talk about community input, because at each of those milestones, we'll make sure that there's a series of community meetings before each one. So before the submittals are made, we will have opportunities for input. And then there's sort of a difference between the meetings that happen within that yellow box and the ones that happen afterwards, you might say. The ones within there is when we are truly looking for input into the project, what, what are people looking for, you know, what are their concerns? Once the schematic design is, is submitted to the, to the state, that kind of describes the project, its budget, its schedule, its scope. After that point, then it's more about getting the word out prior to voting on it. And those are different kinds of meetings where you're, you're presenting information more or less and answering questions to make sure people are informed for voting. So prior to that, we're interested in getting input into the design process and after that we're kind of just providing information so people, you know, make an informed vote.
And I know that the principals, at least at the elementary level, we share out, there's a link to a Google Doc that asks for feedback from our families. So I know that our individual communities have received that and then if they've chosen to, they've been able to fill out that Google Doc that then gets fed into the frequently asked question doc, which is a live doc, so.
Yeah, and then we're, we're keeping the rest of the elementary team as engaged as possible even though we're on the actual building committee, just so they're able to share up-to-date information with their communities as well. So, because it's not just our communities, then you know, it's all the communities.
Right. That's awesome.
Thank you all, I really appreciate that. I think it's just, we have a lot of wisdom and knowledge in the community and I'm just really glad to hear that you all have been prioritizing that in the process and will continue to do so. Thank you.
No, I have nothing.
I'm good. Ooh. Good? Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the fourteenth, hopefully that'll be early in the agenda and that'll be a vote, so, thank you. Have a great night, drive safe.
Good to see you.
new state requirements. So I'm just going to start it off and I'm going to throw it to you, Dr. Rab. So basically, we heard on Thursday last year, Chapter 70 aid. It's hard because when the budget season happens, the governor has projections and then the budget doesn't get approved until after our town meeting, like we don't know what's going to happen, what are estimates and if it comes to fruition, so it's hard to kind of do the budget that we have because ours is due at the end of December. So when you're doing a budget at the end of December and trying to figure things out and then things are changing and it's by the end of June?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just really extremely difficult, so that's probably a different discussion for another time.
You actually don't know what's going to happen.
Right? You just don't know what comes in. So we wanted to talk about it here because we were looking at, the announcement came out about what Maury Haley's budget, preliminary budget is. And Dr. Rab, you were kind enough to put some numbers together for me and I appreciate it because this is what you're really good at. This was really good. But I was shocked to hear that last year for the Chapter 70 money, we received additional four point, a little over $4 million in additional state aid, school aid. And you're going to walk through that, but I am going to walk through a couple of things. So we have a projected number that would be coming in in addition to that of 4.9, $4,944,752 projected additional, which is an astounding number, it's more than last year, but with that number comes, changes, it comes, there's a change in what's required by the schools, there's a change in what the bar is that has been set for us to have to reach. And, you know, that's the net school spending and all that information, so I had asked you, so I'm going to say a couple of things about it. And so the Chapter 70, you know, there's a lot of misconceptions out there because it is school, state aid. And that money that comes in, you know, usually it comes in, it fluctuates, it's like $70,000 more than what we estimate because it comes in a little more than what you usually think. But this was like shocking last year, this is shocking this year. So when we looked at that, they also had stated, you know, they changed what the, the required net school spending is. And we're going to kind of go through all of that and where we fall. We've always in like the past nine years fallen within the 30 percentile range, we're in 30% above the net school spending, which is really important to want to be above and not at because that's not a, you know, where anybody wants to be. So thinking that because we're above it, it's forget about schools or forget about students, that's not appropriate mindset to have. Just as an example, I asked you for some numbers and you provided them. So we were in that range of like that 30 percentile range for all those years and last year we dropped to 24% when they changed that, that bar and giving us that money because in order to make it whole where we were at 30%, we were short like a million plus. And then I asked for maybe some comparisons to other towns and where they are with their net school spending so that we can have a comparison to kind of show what happens, especially with all the Chapter 70 funds that folks had received. Canton is at 49.6% above the net school spending number. Easton's 26 and a half percent above. Randolph is 31.4% above. Sharon is 50% above. So we're at 24 right now, just want to kind of throw that out there because this isn't a rare thing, in fact, we're lower. And the per pupil expenditure, we're lower than a lot of other districts in the state, that's a different number, that's a different thing to put at. So I don't look at this money as, oh my gosh, this is, there's, this is school money. I look at this as they sent this in because clearly there's a need and they found that need. And based on what I'm sharing as those percentages that other districts are above net school spending, I'd say Stoughton still had a way to go with that. And then what I want to do is I want to ask you to just provide what the new state requirements are for the district and kind of also share what Chapter 70 means so that people can have a better understanding.
Sure, absolutely, thank you very much. So Chapter 70 is state aid that we get to partially offset our budget. And what Chapter 70 is, is a combination, it looks at our enrollment and it looks at our enrollment both for kindergarten and then broken down into elementary, middle school and high school. It also looks at special education in district and at district, it looks at our low income population and it looks at our English language learners and does calculations around all of those areas in order to come up with what's called a foundation budget or required net school spending. They're usually pretty close to the same number. And, and as you said earlier, usually those numbers go up a little bit every year. Last year, because of the recent Student Opportunity Act of the state, Stoughton realized an additional $4 million in Chapter 70 money. And at the same time, they increased our foundation budget or required net school spending by five and a half million. And so it didn't catch up. So that's how we dropped from a 30% above to 24% above because when you have a higher required spending, but that's not backfilled completely, that percentage drops, if that makes some sense.
Mm-hmm.
This year, or what they put out last week for FY24, or our next year, as you said, they added an additional $4.9 million of Chapter 78, which is great, and that was primarily based in, in those areas for instruction and low income and EL students and special education and they recognize those needs. But at the same time, they increased our required net school spending by $6.3 million. So it's a similar situation as happened from last year. Last year it was $4 million of state aid and increasing our spending requirements to 5.5 million. This year, we're getting This year, we're getting four point nine million dollars in state aid through Chapter 70. But they're increasing our required net school spending by six point three million dollars. So it puts us in that same deficit position over time. I did the calculations for 24 for what our actual spending would be, to try to figure out that percentage. And if we maintain our school budget the way it's currently for FY24, it would be fifteen percent above our required net school spending. And as Mrs. Grobey said, we don't wanna be right at net school spending. That's a very low bar for education. Stoughton has always had a higher bar than that for its students. We run wonderful enrichment programs. We run a summer program. We do a lot of things that are above and beyond many other communities. And you mentioned some of the percentages from other towns. And so right now, that fifteen percent above would keep us above net school spending, but it is falling. We were at that thirty percent for six or seven years in a row. And now we're at twenty-four and then we'd be down to fifteen in twenty-four. So I just wanted to put that out there as this is kind of the position we're in based on the information received from the state last week and based on the current numbers and the way our budget is right now.
Okay, so where we'll be next year because of that change and what the net school spending is, we'll be at fifteen percent above. I'm gonna repeat one more time, just to make it clear so people can understand where we are. We'll be at fifteen percent. Canton is at forty-nine point six. Easton's at twenty-six point five. Randolph at thirty-one point four and Sharon at fifty percent, fifty percent, five zero. So I just think it's important for people to understand that we're not playing with numbers to say they're above this, so they don't need this or this is where it goes. Where we are, and I think that someone would say that your predecessor, Dr. Rizzi, who was here for ten years, worked really hard and would continuously say, if we had more money, we would do this. If we had more money, we would do this. And we were continually trying to get to where these other districts were in terms of where their net school spending percentile was. So we were, we were there, we were getting there at that thirty percent. We weren't caught up. But we were able to do really good work and get, do the best that we could. We have great summer programs. We offer the full-day kindergarten. We, and that's expanded significantly, that we ran, we're running out of room in this building for that, because that's how high a need with a lot of, it's a special ed program. It's pretty significant. In addition to that, I mean, we have a high ELL population and that just continues to grow. And that's part of our triennial plan. Our triennial plan is also part of the sped growth and the things that we need to do as a community, school community, to build on that and to work on those student populations and provide them more services and help. So I just wanna, this isn't a political thing. This is a thing about children and it's about their education and what's best for them. So I just wanna kind of say that, because it's important. Now, you mentioned the Student Opportunity Act, which I'm gonna reference as the SOA. So the state reached out to us last week. And I'm gonna bring it to you, Mr. Ford, to go into that in a second. But they reached out to us last week to ask us, the school district has to do a pretty extensive report and the school committee will have to vote on it in the upcoming months. And that is, we need to write every single thing that we do with the Chapter 70 money, what we do, and we have to account for the money that's coming in and what we did with it. So I wanna hand that to you, Dr., doctor, Dr. Ford. No, Mr. Ford, if you don't mind, just kind of sharing a little bit about the SOA, because I think it's important for people to know what we have to do.
So when the SOA initially came out, what every district was required to do is develop a plan based on additional funding. And then you would implement the plan under a specific criteria you needed to meet. You had to respond to the specific aspects of your school community, areas where you were supposed to focus on gap closing as well as other peripheral things. And so we put the plan in place. And the plan actually lines up with our triennial plan. It lines up with what we did with our ESSR funds. It seemed to fit in really well. And what they do year to year is they actually track your progress and they track your expenditures under the initial piece. Now, something which was different this year, because we just got the new SOA accountability document that we have to go ahead and fill out. And there's a new section. And basically, what they asked us to do is account for every dollar in additional Chapter 70 money that the town was provided last year.
Oh.
Now, this last year, it's not tough to do, because we actually shifted a lot of things out of ESSR into the budget. And all those things actually lined it up, one way or the other, with our goals and objectives from our initial plan. Now, what I don't fully understand at this point is what the intersection is with that report and how it then relates to future funding. And we actually had a meeting with somebody from the state today just to talk about that. And that is gonna be a component moving forward. How it's utilized, we're not quite sure and we didn't get any information. But we are, in fact, gonna have to account for these increases in Chapter 70 funding year to year to the state and specifically say what we did with this additional funding. Now, if they're using it to gauge, you know, how we're implementing our plans or the allocation of our plans, I'm not quite sure at this point. If they're just looking to see how towns and municipalities use additional funding, which is targeted for education, to see if we are, in fact, using it for education or we're using for other things, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna eventually find out. But it seemed like the impression that I had coming out of the meeting is they're doing it to make sure that we're actually using it for things related to education. And that could be things related to healthcare of our teachers, you know, because insurance premiums are going up, or other related costs. But in the end, next year, we're gonna have to put in another Student Opportunities Act plan, three-year plan, to address the gap in achievement between specific aspects of our student population. And I think we need to figure out how the two intersect moving forward.
They didn't tell you today? They didn't, like, when you met with them, they didn't tell you?
They didn't. You know, they say the same thing. You know, we looked at, I actually went and reread the entire Student Opportunities Act in anticipation of the phone call. And they don't say specifically what the nexus is. But it was implied last time by the commissioner. He put out some guidance. And from our conversation, she said, you know, this is the first call we've had about this specific aspect, but we're anticipating several others. And this is something we're probably gonna escalate and ask for more detailed guidance from the commissioner moving forward. So we have a better idea of what they're looking for and why they're asking for it.
Do you think you'll have an idea tomorrow? What I'm asking, because we have to have an idea of what does that mean and how does that correlate to this additional money that's coming in? It's a lot. And you know what I mean? Like, we knew as of Thursday. So I was hoping we would have an idea, at least by FinCon meeting, what that means, because it's important for us to be able to have important conversations.
I think that we'll have a better idea what they're looking for when they put out the requirements for the next plan and we start the whole process of submitting it. And, you know, they'll send out guidance documents. They'll send out expectations. They'll give us criteria we have to meet in developing the plan, just like last time.
So is there someone in the state that I could talk to? Maybe Katie, you and I can call them and ask them so we can get better understanding of what?
So there's a specific number, or if you go online, you can actually request, you can book an appointment to meet with one of their specialists to specifically talk about the intersection of the Student Opportunities Act with the budget and other, you know, reporting requirements or project reporting. We did that today and they didn't have the answers for us.
So did you speak, you spoke to them too?
Yes, we were on the same call for about fifteen minutes. And unfortunately, they didn't give us a whole lot of guidance about what acceptable uses of the funding was. It was really at the committee's discretion to really figure that out. And they did say that they understand that they're gonna have these questions from a lot of districts and they'd be looking at it over time.
So it's at our discretion?
Yep.
They said?
Yep.
It's just hard, because it's a lot of money. And it's like you feel bad, because there's all this stuff going on in the town and it's like, it's like I don't know, like, if we do something, we mess something up with the state. Like, I would wanna know what that means. You know what I'm trying to say?
Right, right.
Like, so is it at our discretion or is it?
It's collaboration with the town. So, you know, she was like, the Chapter 70 money, it does go to the town, but it's understood that it's needed for education. And so she knows that there's gonna be this collaboration between school committee and the town in order to decide the best use of the fund.
So she, so it's at our discretion? It's not something that if the SOA gets filled out and we do something with this money, then if we don't do it for all educational needs, they're not gonna screw the town later, the schools?
Well, that's.
I just wanna yes or no, because like?
That's what was vague, unfortunately. That's what was vague.
Yeah, so, and when you look at the Student Opportunities Act, there isn't a specific provision in terms of how we have to allocate funding. But there will be a point next year where we have to develop a plan and we have to fund it. And we have to go after closing the gaps in terms of student performance.
Yeah.
But, but it is our money. It is the town's money.
So, but, so we can?
That was interesting for us in looking at the new reporting document, is all of a sudden, they're asking for us to account for all of it. And my question is, why? Because it's not in the law, it's not in the regs.
Right.
And yet, here it is.
Right.
So is that just for the sake of gathering information and how people are choosing to use this additional funding? Or is there something we're supposed to connect?
Well, that's what I'm having a hard time with, because I'm, it's hard to like talk about this in a collaborative way, like, and what, how I wanna talk about it, if you're telling me that. I just feel like it's mixed messages. So it, right?
Yeah, 'cause I think I know what you're saying. We'd love to help out the town, because we're in a crisis right now. But we don't want to even say something like that if it's gonna penalize us, like, for next year, because I'm nervous about dropping down to fifteen. I'm sure everyone else is too. So we wouldn't wanna do something drastic like that without knowing that next year, you know, it's not gonna come back to.
So that's what I was hoping when I asked last week, to reach out to them so we could have just a better understanding, because there's decisions that need to be made quickly. And there are decisions that it's important to us to make them and to do the right thing by the time. So if you're saying it's at our discretion, and I'm looking at you, because I know, I heard what you said and you're saying that they said it's at our discretion.
They said in collaboration with the town. I wanted to be clear.
So we can do that, correct? We can do that in collaboration with the town?
You can.
Okay, that's good. That makes me feel better. So, and keeping in mind that we still have to be cautious, because with Chapter 70 funds that come in after this, next year or whatever, we have to take it and we have to do what we need to do to be able to work where we are. So if we were to put all this money into the budget, what would be the percentage we'd be at above net school spending? If you don't mind me asking, I'm sorry. That's probably the one number.
No, I brought it.
Did I throw you off? Oh, you got it?
I haven't. So to get back to twenty percent would take two point seven million dollars. To get to twenty-four percent would take the entirety of it. It's five million dollars even.
So, so the, that number would keep us at where we are this year if we add that?
If we took the whole four point nine.
So to remain consistent and to be able to consistently do what we need to do, because they know, based on projections, our low income and what we need to provide, it's going up. Obviously, the cost of everything's going up. I'm just gonna say a couple of things and then just thank you guys for that information, because it helps. But then I'll just say a couple of things and then you guys can kind of chime in. This is all new. We're just learning all this, by the way, from everybody. So it's just hard to kind of navigate it. And unfortunately, we do all this publicly, so just everybody has to bear with us. So the way that I see it is there is an issue with the healthcare costs in town. Two million seventy-seven thousand six hundred ninety-six sixty-five dollars. I think there was also an error with, what was it? Do you know, Katie? There was an error, a miscalculation of four hundred thousand. Anywhere of what that number is?
I think there was.
There was an estimate? No. So there's something else as well, which we can have ready for FinCon meeting tomorrow. But there's something else that needs to be filled, a gap, not from the schools, but I think it was an estimate with the overall budget that was shorted. Please.
I was gonna say, my plan tomorrow is to ask the leadership to schedule a health fund meeting. So, because it's not on any of our agendas.
Yeah.
The other thing I was gonna say is, we've got a whole lot of time that's not being used in the calendar, because we're not doing subcommittees.
Yeah.
I could see you guys easily just asking for another meeting that shows what happens after our health fund discussion.
Yeah.
So you could close the loop on it if you wanted. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. What I, in my opinion, and then I'll, you know, kind of break it out to all of you, is we've, at the district level, we've worked really hard to kind of maintain where we were at the net schools, at the percentage above net school spending. And we have the ESSR funding, which helps significantly. And we're gonna be losing the ESSR funding, the remainder of it. This is the last year, is that correct? So a lot of that, we rolled into when we took the two point?
Nine.
Nine. You're quick, good. Two point nine million dollars of the four million we got last year and the budget that we have, the one point nine percent increase in our budget is the remainder from the two point nine and the four million we got last year. So we actually didn't ask for an increase in the budget this year. And this four point nine four four number, it's significant. And I think that we're at a time in the town where we're in a dire need, where my opinion, it's just my opinion, is that perhaps we look to shift this money towards a stabilization fund and help to fill the gap with the healthcare costs instead of having, and I don't really know, because I tried to have conversations with folks who haven't heard back. So instead of having articles or whatever, is there articles? Do you know, or what, like, how? I don't know what the plan was.
There are articles for stabilization.
Was there?
Is that what you mean?
I don't know. No, to cover the health, to cover the?
To cover health, that's an enterprise account.
Okay.
That's an enterprise account that is, that needs a subsidy.
Yeah, so I think that if we were to do what is right for the town and to use that money to fix that issue, and then potentially, we can look at the remainder of that and see putting some more of that in the stabilization. I know that Bill Rowe, the town accountant, sent the budget today and there was something in the budget in terms of the transportation, special education transportation deficit, right, in that line?
Yes.
So maybe that's something we need to look at as well. But my opinion is I think we need to kind of square up and figure out how to get us out of this dire issue in town. And then go from there. And then next year, whatever comes for additional Chapter 70 and Chapter 70, as we always have in the past, we continue to bring that money into the budget and keep going. This is a temporary thing, but I do think we're in a hard time and we need to kind of chip in. Again, just my opinion. Sorry, guys. Like, I'll let you guys go. Again, just my opinion. Sorry, guys. Like, I'll let you guys go. It was a long-winded.
Can you come back to me? I need to like formulate.
Do you want me to go down this end?
Yeah.
How you doing? You guys like understanding or agreeing with the mindset, like it's a lot of money and like it's like a deficit? You know, like it's an issue? And I don't know. Go ahead.
You know I agree, and you know that as always, this school does always help when there is a hole in the budget. And we have for nine years, and I'm sure they will continue to do so going forward. My only concern is bringing us from twenty-four or twenty, wherever we were, to fifteen. How is that going to affect students in the district?
My answer to that, right now, that's the budget that we have. So that's the one, the one point nine one percent increase that we agreed to, that we voted on back in December. So we know that that budget works. We know that budget gives us what we need for our students in FY twenty-four. So even though they increased our required net school spending significantly and that lowers the percentage, it doesn't lower the amount of dollars that we've committed. And so we've made that commitment to those dollars.
Exactly. And then going forward as like a new school committee, I just, the new school committee coming in, I would just hope that, you know, these talks would be again out in the open so that it's not always a lot of money just given over to the town, which is needed, and I agree with that. But you have to look out for students first.
The right thing. Do you have any comment?
Oh.
No, it's okay. It's just, it's more of like a fiscal responsibility thing. And also, like I said, this is a one-time thing. I think that it's the right thing to do. I think that as we continue with the budget, we need to start building again. Do you know what our average per pupil expenditure is right now in comparison to what the state average is just right now at the twenty-four percent? Oh, you have that too?
I, no, actually, I don't. But I know the latest.
Thought you were like going to get an A plus.
The latest, it's in my office, the latest numbers from the state are FY twenty-one. The state didn't give out numbers beyond that, but we are below the state average in FY twenty-one.
Do you know roughly how much below?
Off the top of my head, I want to say about five hundred dollars per student, but I.
So we'll go down once all this chapter seventy, if we forego this piece, it'll go down. But if we can commit to starting next year in the budget to continuing to taking all the chapter seventy money that comes in and starting to build back what we need to, the town will know we did the right thing, right? And we can at least know that this was put in a place, like in my, like, we need to do, put that money there and then in stabilization to kind of help it to stabilize where we are economically as a town. And then that can pay for what's needed to be done. And then I did receive, I know I received an email today, I guess I'm supposed to sign something, which is the health insurance design plan MOA with the unions. So that, it looks like that was completed as well. So I think there's, I have to look through it. I wasn't part of the discussions. But it looks like there was some savings and stuff there. So I think that that's been fixed for the future or temporarily. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at it. So that's great news. So kudos to everyone that worked on that. And, you know, to the unions, all the unions in town and the folks that work in town. So I think at FinCon meeting, we could open and we can make some, if we're all going to be there, correct? We're all going to be there. So we will make the motions at the FinCon meeting?
You have to join hearing.
Yes. So, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm thinking to myself and I'm looking over there. I'm so sorry. Yeah. And, but we can all, since we're all going to be there, we're going to open the session. And then we can make the motions to do what we need to do to support this movement and then to fill that gap. And I hope that that, you know, makes FinCom's job easier in trying to figure out stuff for funding. And then what we were doing in January is we stopped hiring on all the pairs and all the stuff because we were looking to give money back to help with the insurance issue. So we had all that. We cut an assistant superintendent role as well and all that. But now we're seeing that, like I said, there's that, the transportation, the sped transportation issue. But also, we'll be looking for a new superintendent. So a lot of things are changing now. And we'll be looking for a new principal of a middle school, a new sped director. There's other things that will be coming. So we're looking for a lot of new leadership roles. And it's obviously, so we need to take a step back. There's a lot going on. So that being said, I think like we can, I think take a vote at, when I'm more prepared, I just wanted to share how I felt about the chapter seventy with you guys first. And if you guys are open to that, we can vote on that at the FinCon meeting since it'll be a public meeting for us to vote, to put that money as, when it comes in, where it needs to be to cover the insurance gap and all that. Good?
Sounds good.
All right, cool. All right. Sorry to take up so much time on that subject, but it was really important for us to talk about that. I was floored when I saw how much money, because we have to look. So like I said, we'll have to look and see if there's some piece of that that we have to put in the budget only because of that negative, I don't know what that means. We're going to have to look at the numbers. But, okay. Anyway, so there's that. And then the next item on the agenda is superintendent. So the first thing we're going to do is, so I read your letter of resignation at the last meeting. So now what we're going to do is, just wanted everybody to kind of get it and review it. And then we're going to now take a vote to accept his resignation with the date in the vote so that we can announce his last day. We have to make an exception because within his contract, he had a six-month. It was six months in his contract of when his last day would be. So we need to take a vote of an exception of not cutting the six months. So in other words, we have to vote to dismiss the six months resignation timeline in his contract and to accept the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three date as his last day with Stoughton Public Schools. Did I just make that motion by accident?
So moved? I just did.
That was really weird. I made it by accident. So, okay, someone, one second.
Second.
Okay. I did, no, she moved it.
I moved it.
Yeah. Thank you. That was weird. Yeah, so that was it. So we just made the motion to waive the six months and then to make your last day June thirtieth and accept your resignation. So I had to just kind of figure out your contract, all the information in it before we accepted it. So that being said, I'm going to ask down here first, so are you in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So that would be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, last day. Then that brings us to the next subject, which is superintendent and talking about like what the next phase and that would be and what we're going to have to do. So I was thinking about this like long and hard. It's been quite hectic because we've been through this. This will be the third time in four years, which is unheard of. It's crazy to be here. So we have a couple of options. I just want to like kind of give those options of what the next steps are. And, you know, keeping in mind that I do want to thank Mr. Ford for letting me know that he's not interested. And he was like, no, thank you. Listen, before you guys even look over here. And, you know, he's done, he's been interim twice. And he's like, I can't keep my head on straight because I got another job to do as well. So I appreciate that and don't want to throw that on you as well. So thank you. It's a smile of relief from you over there. So we have a couple of options to start a search now for a superintendent that starts July first. And this late, this is kind of late to start a search, so it's kind of a really late time. And this is what we ended up doing the last time, and we're kind of ended up here again. Because usually, a search is like a year long. It's a long process. You hire, you know, help, you go through a whole thing. In addition to that, there's other options of appointing an interim for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and doing a full search, like I mentioned, for that full year. I just kind of want to say, this is like very untraditional of me, but I want to say that given that this is the third time in four years that we've been looking for a new superintendent, I really believe that we need someone that has experience as a superintendent. We've had two that didn't have any and it didn't really last, you know. And I respect and understand, Stoughton's a very tough town as well, but it's a hard job. It's a significantly hard job. So, you know, I know of a sitting superintendent that may be interested. It's, you know, I think it's important for us to be able to, you know, look to see if that's, you know, all the options that are out there, considering that we can't have an interim, Jonathan won't be the interim, Jonathan Ford won't be the interim or the superintendent for appointment. And it leaves a huge gap, missing a principal at the middle school looking for that, a special education director trying to fill that. There's a lot of things to try to fill. So I'd like to ask the committee, if you're authority, to reach out to them and see if they are interested and willing to have a public interview by the full school committee. The district is going through a lot of leadership changes, like a lot. And I think that appointing someone who has experience as a school superintendent will be a huge benefit to the district. This is a sitting superintendent, so I'd like to be able to at least ask because they have that experience. And I think Stoughton deserves the opportunity to get someone with experience. And this late in the game, we really need the help. You're going to have two new school committee members. It's going to be a brand-new school committee. So, you know, I just am concerned for the district and for you guys, obviously. You guys need that leadership. So I just wanted to ask you guys if that's, you know, something that you're willing to do and, you know, at least, let's do it as soon as possible, as soon as we can. If I can reach out and they're willing to do it, at least look at that option and see how that goes. And if it doesn't go, then we're going to have to go through the year process. But we're also going to have to hire an interim and do an interview process short term. It's going to be quite a roller coaster. But I'd like that opportunity to reach out to this person if you guys would permit. And I don't know. What do you guys think?
Question. Has this person individually expressed interest or you haven't even had the conversation yet?
No. I think they might be. They're, they have a lot of experience. They've, they're familiar with the town of Stoughton. So I think it's worth having them come in and see if they're willing to just talk to us and do a public interview. Like I said, if it works, great. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But while we're doing that, we, you know, like, I think that's an option to do. Mr. Ford's, you know, he's got a lot. He's got a new assistant superintendent to train too. So I think that, you know what I mean?
Also, so, trying to think, the like, because you're mentioning an interim superintendent, but hiring potentially while we look for a full-time.
No. So what I'm asking is if I can reach out to a current sitting superintendent and ask if they'd be interested in coming to a school committee meeting and being interviewed for that position and for us talking to them and seeing if we think they're a good fit for the district.
That's the first option.
That's the outside-the-box option.
Okay.
The other option is we need to do an interim search.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
And then we would have, we would hire them, and then we would do a year-long search for a fill-in for them. So that we'd have an interim, and then we would have someone that would become a permanent. It would not be an interim. Usually you have interims are retired superintendents that will come in and help out for a bit. And then, so it's like a very long process. So it's, and then the other one is start searching now, and you have a couple of months to fill them. And it's not successful, doesn't work. We've tried that.
Okay.
So I think if we work this situation out and see if this, I think that everybody will be well impressed with who the person is, like well impressed. And I think you guys, that we need an opportunity for you guys to be able to vet this and know that there's stability after we're gone, you know, and it's no public comment turn, no. So it, so it's, you know what I mean? Anyway.
I personally think it's a great idea, only because we are, it is going to be a new board. And I think that the new board will be busy with MASC classes and just relationships on a whole. And just to have some leadership with a seasoned superintendent would be extremely helpful going forward.
Game changer.
I'm all in favor of this. I think, you know, we need to explore all our options. I would love to have somebody with experience come in. If nothing else, I'd love to have them, if they change their mind and decide it's not something they want to do after interview, at least you've had the interview process, and I think that will give those of us who are on the committee experience interviewing a superintendent, knowing what we want to look for because, you know, this person will bring a lot of experience and we can see, you know, how that will fit in with Stoughton. I mean, somebody with different experiences. So I would love to have the opportunity to talk to this person if they're.
Do like a formal interview publicly. Yes.
Oh, do you want me to make a motion?
No, I want, let's either.
Sorry, sorry.
I think in normal circumstances, I would have a preference to do like an open interview process because this, just to like ensure transparency and everything. But I think given all of the extenuating circumstances that we have going on that you've mentioned, I think that this makes sense for where we are now as a district. So I, yeah, some reservations, but I would feel comfortable with it, given everything that's going on.
Very strong candidate. It's, yeah. If they're willing, like, I would be ecstatic to do it. But again, I have to entertain, like, ask and see. But I know, Dr. Rab, you have a lot of time off too, towards the end of your, it's just, he's going to be out like the whole month of June because he's using all his time off. So we just approved him ending in June where you guys are going to have a brand-new committee for a month and then no superintendent. So it's really important. So you might be for like a month, maybe.
I got it.
All right. So now that it hit me, but.
Been there before.
I don't know. Wait, I don't know. We'll figure that out. But like, I think this is important. I think our district deserves someone like this and the opportunity. So, you know, so anyway, I would like, what I'm asking is I'd like the opportunity to reach out to that person and then see if they'd be willing to be interviewed for the position as superintendent of Stoughton Public Schools.
Do we have to make a motion or can we just say, go with our blessing?
I'd prefer a motion, so you guys all tell me what to do.
I'll make a motion to have Sandra Grope go out and.
Too formal.
Try to poach someone.
No, don't know.
I would like to just see authority to go out and talk, see if you can get an interview with another superintendent.
Yes. Yeah, I would like to reach out there and see if they're interested and willing to have a public interview by the school committee. Yeah. Who seconded it? Did someone second it?
Second.
Oh, you're so quiet down there. I couldn't, I, okay, you seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right. So I will get on that. And then based on that, if this person says yes, then we'll schedule a meeting outside of the regular schedule to have that public meeting. Okay? And then we'll go from there. So the next is the acceptance of the minutes from the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
And I just have one.
What is it?
I was just wondering if on the, under the school committee policy, the signage KHBA. I know that Ms. Miller was here and she was engaged in that conversation as well.
Yeah, she's not in here.
I just would like her, because she actually had told me, told the whole committee that she went out and had discussions with other Hockamuck League high schools and how they approached the subject as well. And the differences between the, was it the rainbow piece flag and?
Yeah, she provided like what the difference was with that for unity. And then she had the idea of the wall of flags. She saw it at some other schools. And then Sam Lafarge, our student representative, had spoken as well and stated she saw that wall of flags in some schools as well and thought it was nice to see all the different country flags. It was bright or something. Yeah, you said that, right? How am I remembering this?
No, so I just, I just wanted that to be captured in the minutes as well because she was here for that particular.
Yes. So do we want to hold on these minutes and then make some, add like your stuff and then we can vote on it because it's a lot, then you can add it?
Sure.
And we'll, at the next meeting, we'll vote on the minutes to approve them and help, right?
And I can just send, yeah, I can just send them over.
Okay, that way it saves you. Okay. So we're going to table the February twenty-second minutes. Oh, my gosh. All right. So the next thing is all of these policies that we got from the MASC to revise at some point. Mr. Ford, I'm going to hand it to you.
So annually, MASC does a review of their standardized model policy manual. And what they do is they look for changes in state laws, even things related to arbitration decisions within the Commonwealth or other factors, guidance from the Department of that. And they put out recommendations for revisions of local school districts' policy manuals. So we have a policy working group. And what we did is we took the reference documents as well as some policies that had been lingering that we talked about making potential revisions to. And we assembled a group and we went through, I don't know, probably about forty policies. And in the end, we had eighteen policies that we either made revisions to our current policies or we adopted a policy from MASC that wasn't in our policy manual. And sometimes, you know, we don't have to adopt all their policies, but sometimes it makes sense, given circumstances, to bring up a new policy on board or, you know, and make revisions to our existing policies. So we included eighteen policies in the current packet. Now, the first time that you see the policies is just an information session. So you're given the policies to read, review, and we'll have a discussion at the next meeting. But there are four policies in here where there's just a simple change in terminology that doesn't actually affect the sum or the substance of the policy. It's just a provision based on a change in understanding related to, in this case, the definition of race, which includes traits related to hair texture, hairstyle, hair length, and protective hairstyles. So, and that, and that actually came out of the Acts at two twenty-two, chapter one seventeen. So if you look at the policy updates, you can actually vote policy AC, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. Policy GBA, equal employment opportunities. Policy JB, equal educational opportunities. And policy JFB, school choice. Because we haven't actually changed the policy itself. We've just added additional clarification as to a protected class.
BEDH, I think we were going to do as well, the public comment one.
Yeah, the public comment, it's within the purview of the committee to address that as well.
Can you do me a favor, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Do you mind explaining the, it's not an acronym at the front of the policy, but can you just explain the letters in the front and where they fall in the policy manual and why?
So if you look at the first, so the policy manual's broken up into a bunch of categories. And I don't actually know where it initially originated.
Yeah, I'm going to look it up.
But, but the first letter in each one of the policies correlates to a specific category. And then as you add policies, you'll add another letter to the sequence. And then as you add some policies to existing policies, the acronym just grows or the little correlation just grows. So if you look at a policy that has simply two letters, it means it's a base policy. So if you look at, for instance, you have policy AC, that is a primary non-discrimination policy. And if you looked in our policy manual, you'll find there are subcategories like it, like an ACA, an ACB, an ACC. And those would be subcategories of that overall overarching policy. And in really what you have to have, if you want, if you want all the subcategories, you really need to have the general policy and then the additional circumstances or specific criteria they want to address. So in looking at this particular slate of policies, you'll notice where the focus was of MASC this past year in terms of their own policy review committees because they were very focused. in terms of their own policy review committees, because they were very focused under things related to budget and also things related to equal opportunity and discrimination.
Thank you. I'm trying to look up the policy manual.
And for the members of the committee who don't know, we actually have our policy manual hosted through MASC. So if you actually went to our website, we actually link into the MASC policy site, because we do use their policy services. And it was, I don't know, about eight or nine years ago, we actually went through, and we went through a two-year process. It was Joyce, Suzanne, and I, we went through every single policy in this school district with a rep from MASC to ensure the fact that everything we're doing was aligned with the state expectation. And everything is actually up to date with current rules, regulations, and expectations from, you know, from the state, the federal government, and DESE.
Yeah, so like, section A, like you mentioned, the nondiscrimination falls under section A, foundations and basic commitments. So that's the main category, section A. And then we have AA, school district legal status, AA1. And then it keeps going, AC falls in there at one point, it's the fourth one, AB, AC, ACR, ACA, it keeps going. So it's each section starts AV. There we go.
And what we do also is, there is a, there's a general manual from MASC. And you might look, there might be like ACA 1, 2, 3, 4. There's different versions based on the structure of the school district. So every time there's a policy for a school district like ours, there might be an equivalent policy for like a, like a centralized school district, or vocational school, or charter school. And we don't use all their policies, because not all are applicable to us. And there are things that we choose not to define, or you choose not to define as a committing you leave on the school administration, or just a district's interpretation of state law. And there are times where you might want to go through and look at other school committee policies, because in that reference area, you know, there's got to be 50 or 60 schools, a lot, a lot of which use the policy service. But they all have their own unique take on policies, given the community they serve and the expectations of their local school committee. So when we, as a policy working group, look at things, we'll look at the model policy from MASC. But we'll also look at representative policies for neighboring school districts or school districts across the Commonwealth to see, you know, what really fits Stoughton, as opposed to necessarily using like a cookie cutter MASC policy.
Yep. It's quite a, we have over 300 policies.
Oh, we have, we have more than that.
We have way more, right?
A lot more than that.
I mean, there's just, it's a lot of policies, but we have to cover them. So a lot of, every year, we end up having a ton of revisions based on state law changes and then anti-discrimination laws, all the different laws. And then MASC scrubs through all those different changes in law. And then they give up the school committees the recommendations for what the changes are, some we have to adopt. Like you mentioned, the, you know, anti-discrimination piece.
Yeah, and you'll see that, you're going to incorporate it in your policies today. And then what you'll do is you'll see those then trickle through our handbooks and trickle through our other guidance documents within the district. So once you put them in place, we'll then make all the corresponding changes, you know, to the documents that we control that fall into the school committee policies.
Okay, so you told us that, I'm just trying to go through, I circled the numbers.
I did too.
You did too? Good.
There are four policies which are just incremental changes based on updated guidance.
Yep, so there's.
That don't change, yeah, that don't change.
There's one that isn't though.
One, there's one that is.
Yeah.
But the four that are is, is AC, GBA, JB, and JFB.
Yep. So. I'm going to take out JB. Where do I see that one? There it is. Okay. So I took out those ones, AC, BEDH, GBA, JB, JFB. So we have the remainder of the policies that are, oh my gosh, I'm going to walk through, that we are just, everyone can read them, and then we'll discuss at the next meeting. So DBC, DBD, oh dear, these are all in the same section. DBG, DBJ. DD, DH, DI, DJ, DK, EEA. JIC, JICFB, and KCD will all be reviewed at the next meeting for the open discussion. So you have those to review, bring them to the next meeting, and then we can go through there. Cool? Taking those off the gamut. So now we have these five that we can at least look at. That might hone it down for you better?
Whatever you want to do.
Do you want to just walk us through the ones with the slight changes and we can vote?
Yeah, so, so the four that I mentioned just have to do with putting in an additional definition of race or defining definition of race to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, protective hairstyles. And the correlative legal reference goes back to the Acts at 222, chapter 117. So it doesn't change the substance of the policy, it just expands the definition of a protected class within the policy. And that would just appear as an asterisk at the end of the policy, along with the legal reference to chapter 117.
I'm going to go to the next one. We'll just do a motion for all of them. Is it the same change?
And that's, and that's the same for all of them? And then we can come back to BEDH.
Yep. So we can make a motion to the revised policies. Do you want to do the motion, Lindsay? It's the four?
Yep.
Not BEDH, the other ones.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the changes to policies AC, GBA, JB, and F, JFB.
Yes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So those are good, and you'll send them to the MASC?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Then we have. So much stuff. BEDH, this is public comment at school committee meetings. So this one here, um, just want to make it clear, because we kind of had an incident the last meeting. All citizens' comments are addressed through the chairperson of the meeting. It's actually master in a law, like all comments are made through the chair of every board at a public meeting. It's, it's like, it's, I think in some boards, they, it doesn't happen. And other people that are on the board start speaking to the people in the crowd, or the speakers at a table. And all communication is supposed to go through the chair at the meeting, it's just what the law is. And so I just want to kind of state that, that's, it's in the, it's a law, but we have it in here to be crystal clear that all citizens' comments will be addressed through the chairperson of the meeting. The school committee chair will favor those speakers who sign up in advance under the procedure specified below. And we always, always have the procedure up there, we've always had. It's only 15 minutes a meeting, nothing's changed, it's the policy, 15 minutes tops for public comment, only the first five speakers, it's three minutes a person. If it's the same subject, they can get cut off and have, you know, one person speak on behalf of them. So it's not going to be, it's not that five people with the same message should be speaking, because there might be someone else that may want to have a different message and speak. So that is part of that, and it's all up there as well. But I think it's important, we want to note the master in a law component to this and ensure that it's just understood, so people don't think I'm being a jerk when I say you need to address it through the chair. But that is what needs to be done, especially when you have a lot of people in the room. And then we changed the wording in here to make sure, we put the master in a law piece at the top, that's new. Where we said, "School committee meetings are conducted in accordance with the Mass, Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." Public comment is not required by state, and it's a policy that we put in place as a school committee, and it does not have to be on agendas. It is something that can be on and not, it's not on tonight's, because we have a very long agenda, it's two pages long. But it is not a requirement, so it is not something that's guaranteed deed. So people should look at the agenda if they want to speak at public comment. And that's, just educate yourself on that, because you don't want to show up if you, you know, can't speak. No one wants to, you know, have you trek out here on that. So I would just say, find the agendas, they're posted on our site. They're also posted on, at the town hall as well, in accordance to Mass General Law. So that would, I would just say, just, if you can just educate on when the dates are and stuff like that, that will help you more. And that's really the gist, everything else is here. It's just, it just, it's very clear on what, what it is. I don't know if there's anything else. I mean, we have like sections, I don't think people are aware, like improper conduct will not be allowed, defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or defamatory or abusive remarks, the chairperson may terminate that speaker's privilege. Like, this is all part of our policy. So just, there's just key stuff in here that we have. But we wanted to just note that you need to speak through the chair. Lindsay, do you have anything?
Nope.
Mr. Ford, anything to add?
Well, the only other thing we added is we just added a little bit beginning, just clarifying that you need to sign up.
Yep.
At the beginning, and there would be a sheet located in front of the.
No, that was always in there. The sheet's always been there.
Sheet's always been there, but it hasn't always been in the policy.
It wasn't?
No.
Hmm, okay.
So, but it's additional clarification, but it doesn't change anything with regard to the policy.
Okay.
It just provides some additional information to those that choose to participate through public comment.
Yeah. So regardless, it's three minutes a person, there's five people that can speak. That's always been the policy, and there's always been a sheet there. So people need, you know, I just want people to know, it's not something that we're doing or stopping people from speaking, or saying, you know, this, you know, you're not allowed to talk, or you're done, there's too many people. The best bet is if you have a lot of people, you have one person speak and not all those people. That's how the policy actually states it in here somewhere as well. So that would be the one to vote on tonight, so it's very clear on speaking through the chair. Even though it's a law, we wanted to make sure it's prevalent in this, and they had to be signing up on the sheet. So was there any discussion on that? Anything? No? All right.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Lindsay, you're on a roll.
All right, I move that we approve the updated policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings.
A second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's done. Oh dear, second page. We have the 2022, 24, 2024 school calendar. We have, in your packet, there's, I don't know why it's the third sheet, I don't know that. So there's two calendars, and A and B, per contractual agreement. The STA provided feedback on the two as well, just to share their feedback. And had a preference of, I think it was B?
B, yes.
Calendar B. So I wanted to note that to the committee, that the STA president had shared that with me as being favorable to them. Dr. Rab, do you have a recommendation for us to adopt?
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Grope. I would recommend B.
B?
B. It has our staff starting on Tuesday, September 5th, right after Labor Day, and the students returning on Wednesday, September 6th.
Okay.
It's a wonderful calendar. It's after Labor Day, and it's just fantastic. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the Stoughton Public Schools' B calendar. And we can all have a wonderful summer.
She goes on and on. Every time we give a calendar, on and on. I'm just going to second it and then ask who's in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Are you happy?
Well, it's the last time.
Last year, she threw the calendar at me. She didn't like the other, the calendar. Do you remember that?
I do. Every year, I throw the calendar somewhere. Somewhere it goes.
Ah, that's so funny. So the next item on the agenda is the FY, so, I'm sorry, before I move on, can we make sure that that gets published on our social media page as soon as possible? And it gets posted to the SPS website tomorrow, so families know, is that okay? And then you're going to do a monthly update, right? Have you sent out an update to families in a while?
I haven't, I should, and I can.
Yeah. You probably want to put the calendar in it.
Perfect way to do it.
Yeah. If you can go out to them and just communicate some things to them, I think it'd be good for them to know all the good stuff that's happening and what we're doing. But also sharing the calendar, we just want to make sure we continue to do that on a monthly basis.
The calendar is probably the number one question I get as a member of the school committee, is when is the calendar coming out?
We got to say tomorrow.
Oh, you get the good questions. We don't get the pleasant ones.
No.
Okay. The FY '24 budget and articles.
I didn't have anything really to add to that. It's been a standing item, I think we addressed it earlier, in terms of our expectations.
So we're going to FinCom on Wednesday. Sam, I know that you'll be joining us, that we have the Handsome Playground article that the CBC is kindly funding for us. So I don't think Morgan, my daughter Morgan, you know, she's partnered with you on this, but I don't know if she can make it. I guess she might have to work. She, she helps coach lacrosse, a club. So I think she, I heard that tonight when I was leaving, I'm not sure, but you can connect with her. But, um, yeah, so we'll be there Wednesday, and we're looking forward to it. One of our favorite times is seeing the folks at FinCom. So it's exciting. So, um, I think there's more to come with that. The SR3 grants, we need to approve, this is the final year, is that correct?
Yes, '23, '24.
Okay.
It runs through the summer of '24, but yes.
So it goes through the summer of what?
Of '24. So it technically, the funding ends in September of 2024, in the first couple of months of fiscal '25. They just give you that chance.
The top says FY '22 to '25.
So the '25 is just the first couple of months, and they structured it as such so that we can run a summer program and basically get another summer out of the grant.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So it ends FY '25?
Yes.
We should say the right terminology, because I don't want to say the wrong. So next year is the last year, but they gave enough to just roll over. It's not the next school year, but, okay.
When you look at, when you look at these types of grants based on federal funds, they almost all structure like this, because generally you can't get the funds allocated in time to run a summer program.
Yep, yep. Okay, do you want to walk us through this final approval?
So, so we did pick up some additional chapter 70 funding, and we moved a number of positions back into the district budget, because we had a number of things that we, we really didn't know how we were going to sustain, that were paying huge dividends to the district. So, um, so once that happened, we started going back and looking at the ripple effect through the SR2 and the SR3 grants. And, uh, and at the same time, we were running a program evaluation of all the extended school year and the support services we put in, in both SR2 and SR3, because the vast majority of that funding was, was items that we brought online to go ahead and remediate the impact of learning loss and the pandemic. So, um, once we completed that, we went back through and we did do some shuffling, and we restructured out some things from SR3 to SR2, consolidated SR2 grant. We just got done going through the amendment process with the state for that particular grant. But all the expenditures were things related, we'd already approved. Actually, everything in this particular grant are things that you've seen before, but there's a big-ticket item in here that did not appear in the last grants. And that has to do with air conditioning. One of the things that was an eligible expense, and when you look at this grant, what they did is, it's a, it's a grant that they did, will allow you to fund things under the main title grants, like Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, like Perkins, like the 262 or the 242 SPED grants. And they also gave you the capacity to fund things related to air quality and remediating the student learning loss from the pandemic that weren't covered by those other grants. And one of the things that we selected to do was put air conditioning in at the DAW, because the DAW was a site that we use for summer learning, and we could utilize it in terms of the pandemic to fill the, fill a building up and, you know, provide classes and intervention throughout the summer. So we actually went through and had that approved in the first iteration of the grant for significantly less money than this, because, because we have had this spike in inflation in building costs and cost-related construction. So when we, when we were working back through this grant, we eliminated a lot of things that we found weren't necessarily incredibly effective. We added two things which we found were very effective. In particular, the interventionist work with kids one-on-one or in small groups to mitigate specific skill deficiencies, in particular at the elementary level. And we went back to the air conditioning piece at the DAW. So you'll notice we have, it's item number eight and number nine. We have the capacity to basically completely fit out the DAW as a capital project through SR2. And we can also go back and look at the Gibbons, and we can get both through replacing the UN events in the core academic classrooms and transferring some of our existing infrastructure from the DAW to the Gibbons. We can basically air condition all the academic core classrooms at that building as well. Both those projects, they're big-ticket items, and it's not a trivial thing, actually, to get them approved through this mechanism. We have tenet approval for both. We have the bid for the DAW at this point, and we can get it approved once that comes back. And, and the big-ticket change for us, though, is in fact going after the Gibbons with this particular piece. And this would, this in today's dollars should cover the cost of all the academic core classrooms, provided we can swap some of the existing hardware at the DAW over to the Gibbons.
So can I just ask you, so we can do this, and this is in relation to air quality, and that's why, under this grant?
Absolutely.
That's cool.
There's two, there's two aspects. There's air quality, because with the new UN events that you're going to be seeing us purchase, light years ahead of what we have in both those buildings. It's, there's no comparison. And also for the state in looking at this, not only is it air quality, but it gives us the capacity, if in fact we have to deal with the issues of closing a school or dealing with the pandemic, or, you know, the learning loss associated, even with running a hybrid model, we would now have both those buildings. model, we would now have both those buildings available to run summer programs or innovation sessions over the summer, which we did not in fact have in the past. So we've, we've been jammed in tight in terms of air conditioned spaces up to this point. This would give us a huge advantage moving forward. And if, you know, we get these two buildings done, we bring in the new, the new elementary school, we have the high school, we're actually picking these particular projects off and this, you know, at no expense to the taxpayers and stuff.
Yeah, it's crazy. Wow. So the extended school years program stuff will be covered under this and then it's obviously ends when the grant's gone?
Yeah.
The, um, is Gosnold under this?
So Gosnold, we are not going to bring Gosnold back.
So you guys aren't, because I know when we talked at a school committee, we asked you to go and find someone new so we can get more people, so is that in this?
Absolutely, that's the Italian home.
Awesome, can you tell us about that?
I think Dr. Rob's actually had more conversations about it than I.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's fine, I'm happy to discuss it. So, we were able to, to reach out to the Italian Home for Children and they do very similar school-based mental health models and they're able to work with our students. And the prior company Gosnold was only able to give us seven days or 1.4 FTEs. This particular organization will give us 3.4 FTEs. So they'll give us two to three days in seven buildings, up to 21 days in total for, you know, more money, but a lot more in terms of services. And the one thing that they do, which is very nice, is they allow one non-billable hour that the building administrator can use to facilitate lunch groups or staff trainings or consults. And that's something that they give us as part of this contract.
So what does that mean? What do they do when they do that?
So they would do lunch, lunch punches with students, they would do social emotional groups with students beyond their one-on-one work. So typically what they do is one-on-one work with students and they bill the students' health insurance and then, you know, we pay a little small portion of that, but the health insurance pays a piece of that.
Okay.
What they're giving us here is one billable hour that the principal can actually assign a group of students outside of those parameters and gives us a little bit of extra time with that, with that counselor. So it's a wonderful opportunity and the grant will support it for this one year and again really help families get back on track in terms of mental health supports.
What about the secondary level? Because that was where we had the issue, is it, how many?
It's all, all seven buildings.
I know, how many, how many at the secondary, remember it was half an FTE?
It was half for a split, it was like, I think we got the contract for the other one.
Yeah, it was like half an FTE split between the high school and middle school for one day, a week or something?
Yeah.
I think it's somebody every day, I'm almost positive. That's the idea. So we're going to have 21 days in a, we're going to have, we're going from seven days to 21, so we're tripling the amount of days in district.
So at secondary level too?
Yes, we're increasing both middle school and high school.
Oh, that's huge, I'm glad you guys went out, like, that was a big issue, like, we needed more support. That's what this, this grant was for.
Yeah, and if, and if you look at the other things that we budgeted, I mean, there's still additional SEL support, there's still the guidance groups and, and student adjustment council groups run after school. You'll notice we doubled down on the interventions. When we looked at what was the biggest impact dollar for dollar, it was in fact hiring the interventions to work with kids that one-on-one at the elementary level, so we doubled the capacity to do that. And, you know, and just all the things that we do. So it's, this is really, if you wondered what was successful, I mean, you're seeing it here because those are things we're going to choose to sustain. And really, I mean, the goal is to have all the issues related to learning loss more or less wrapped up as best we can when all this is done. I think there are still going to be things that linger and the impact of the pandemic, we're going to continue to feel year to year. But in terms of the academic piece, I believe we can wrap up the majority of this coming year. And with the SEL piece, I mean, we're putting all the pieces in place, you'll notice that we did sustain the MTSS academies again. And that then funds the, the whole next year of our triennial plan, which will then result in an SEL curriculum for the district that then ties in with that district level, school or Director of Counseling and SEL. So it, it kind of all ties together. The end of this grant then supports a triennial plan that then supports the whole next SEL curriculum and framework implementation, so.
Okay.
I think we have it all covered.
Thank you, thanks for all the work on that. Does anybody have any questions?
Can I just ask, when you were looking at the, which interventions were most impactful, how were you measuring that? Was it like class grades or assessments?
We, we had a huge team of people looking at it. And although when we, when we met, we'd go through the results, we actually liked the curriculum, people were breaking down actual student performance. And, and we have data tracking sheets for kids that we identify that need help and intervention based on our benchmark assessments. And the thing we did is, is through that whole process, the data process and doing the data tracking forms, we would assign interventionists to work with a specific student, you can just watch their scores through, through progress monitoring explode. It was, it was remarkable. And when we compared that to someone, we didn't really have anything that didn't pay some kind of dividends, but there were absolutely areas that paid more. And dollar for dollar, this is, it's money in the bag, it's, it just has a huge impact on the kids that we can target for intervention.
Thank you. Katie has a question.
So the Italian home is, did you sign a contract with them already?
Not yet, they've committed to this upon approval of the committee, then we can move forward with that.
Once we approve this.
Oh, so we'll, oh.
They've committed to it if it's approved by the committee.
So can we, can we see like just the breakout, like when you get a chance, so we can see the breakout on what schools are getting, which?
Absolutely.
It's the longest meeting we've had in like years. All right, so, thank you for that. So, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the SR3 funding proposal that is for the FY '22, FY '25 school year with a note that the FY '25 funding only extends through September of 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much and thanks to the, the team for putting that together, thank you both. Moving on to other matters, does anybody have any other matters that they'd like to bring up? No? Any correspondence? I had mentioned I only received, I received this email today at 2 o'clock and it was to sign for the MOA. It just says, as you may be aware, over the past few months, we have been meeting with various town and school employee unions in an attempt to reach an agreement with respect to health insurance plan design changes. During one of the most recent meetings, one of the MTA representatives mentioned that the MOA should be between, between and signed by the town of Stoughton and the school committee